... 04:00 PM. Note that this meeting is being both audio and video recorded. Is there anyone in the audience recording this meeting? Whoever, good to go. All who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. With the superintendent, please take roll.
Dr. Craftree.
Here.
Ms. De Tomaso.
Here.
Mr. Farley.
Here.
Mr. Gazillo.
Here.
Mr. Hagmeyer. Mr. Hopper.
Here.
Mr. Lacatelle.
Here.
Mrs. Ladizori.
Here.
Mr. Les.
Here.
Mr. Peters will not be here. Mrs. Tucker.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Amicross.
Here.
As a reminder, we have an open seat in Covington and an open seat in Washington. I don't see Mr. Bartels this evening. I do see-
He sent his regrets.
Oh, he sent his regrets. I do see our CBA rep. Hi, Mr. Ho.
Hello.
And I do see our student rep. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Mike, you can sit at the table if you want. Mr. Ho. The CBA reps-
You have to speak.
Do you have a speech prepared?
Hope you're joking.
Okay, the Chair certifies that the agenda is valid in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18 through 24, Open Meeting Law. At this time, responses from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is student reports from Ms. Peralt.
All right, so, school is underway. So that means I actually have stuff to report on, which is great. Chromebooks were recently distributed, as we all know, between September 5th and 7th, and I know students are enjoying using them. I personally really love having something to work on in class. Ball sports are also underway, and auditions for the play run on September 5th. And then tomorrow, on the 14th, the football team will be having their first home game at 7:00. So, I hope everyone can be out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Anna? Okay, remember, please make the motion to accept minutes of the regular meeting of August 23rd, 2018. That's our next order.
Move to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of August 23rd, 2018 as printed second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Remember, please discuss with your words.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-5 dated September 6th, 2018. Payroll the amount of $484,495.60.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR 2019-5. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Any extension? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-5D dated September 6th, 2018. Counts payable in the amount of $107,162.40. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR 2019-5 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Any extensions, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 2019-5 dated September 14th, 2018. Counts payable in the amount of $393,923.53.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP 2019-5. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stand.
Any extensions, motion carries. Next order of business is gifts and donations. Whoever, please make the motion.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $650 to Kittredge Elementary School from Action for Healthy Kids for the game, as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve gift for Action for Healthy Kids for the game grant. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next order of business is report to the Chair. As the superintendent noted, we still have a vacancy in the Town of Washington and the Town of Covington. We're going to talk to you later in the afternoon, next. The school committee election is coming up in November. To this date, I'm knowledgeable that we haven't had any nominations come in from the Town of Washington or Covington. Like I said, this is the last meeting too. We have two seats involved, and we'll possibly be able to- so that can be rectified by write-ins, a write-in campaign for someone being rectified by- we still have those positions open by appointing someone who comes forward in the committee, so-
Are the specifications of the quorum, four seats in that, or not?
Well, the Vice Chair and I are having these regrets. But basically, from, according to our attorney, we have 15 seats in the committee. The quorum is eight. Quorum for voting on the operating budget, final budget adoption is still ten.
So, the quorum says fixed at eight, that doesn't vary depending on the total people currently there?
That's his interpretation. That was after speaking with one of the offices in Boston about this. I can't remember whether it was the agent's office. I can ask him to write up. He'll kind for us, so we have it. Then we will square on it.
I can go to the Washington Town Hall Monday during the reading and let you select him to that.
I mean, I believe there ought to be latitude for adjustment. If the seats are vacant, we can't go. We're going to be able to go to Washington's seat now in over a year and a half. So, that hurts us. So, that's that. Now, the next one, the number three, is request for policy and school committee to consider formation of a new standing committee. That's actually a request that the Chair has. And what I'm looking for is based upon a couple of things. First of all, we've heard about, I got to get my head together, because I wasn't planning to be here tonight, but thanks to Florence, my trip was canceled. So, this is basically based upon several things that we've had happen in the country over the past years in the district. But I'm looking for a subcommittee, a standing subcommittee. It doesn't have to be that, but I'd like policy to consider this topic and make a recommendation to the school committee. If we add a standing committee, it has to be changed in our bylaws. We can take a little bit- I don't want to put any more strain on the committee. Honestly, our subcommittees don't really need this regularly as they used to join the committee 18 years ago. We used to have subcommittee meetings usually at least once a month or every other week. So, we've kind of backed off from that. I think more needs to be this time, than the administration's time. Anyway, what I'm looking for is something to address basically three areas. One is student and staff safety and security in school property and school buses. We have excellent representation from our towns, our town police forces, our Mass. State Police, our Trupanata, ones of our committee, school safety. So, I think we're doing a great job, but is there anything more that we can be doing? What can we do to proactively counter threats? Is there other, take a look at what districts are doing across the country? How are our perimeter guards, buildings, the properties? So, that's one thing I think we ought to study. The other thing is environmental impacts on student learning, on student and staff comfort. It's warm in this room this evening. And, you know, our students feel this warmth, feel greater warmth in the late afternoon or early afternoon after the sun's been destroyed in the building. I know that impacts learning. We all know it does. So, is there something better we can do to help alleviate that situation in our schools? Not only the temperature, the air quality, have we taken measurements? I don't know that we have. I know of this situation. At Kittredge many years ago, a parent actually took their student out because there was an issue with allergies. And the building couldn't resolve it, so that we lost that student to a private school, actually. So, it's a real concern. I was in a student athlete meeting about a week and a half ago in Wacona, and it was stifling in A-9 headquarters. So, I just can't imagine students having to learn that environment. Now, fortunately, if the Wacona building project goes through, that ought to be rectified. But we've got other buildings in the district we need to look at. And I'm not saying the administration isn't doing a good job on this, but is there anything more- is there more support that the administration and our staff needs? The final thing is, and I call this a triad, the final thing is the social environment of each of our schools. This is an age-old problem, and we're not going to get away from bullying in total. We're not going to get away from social conflict. But it is an impediment to growth and learning, emotional development, emotional intelligence is, you know, a key word today in industry. So, what can we do to better support our families? We've had a family come in here several times. We've heard about tweets, and we've heard about emails that have come to our attention. I don't want to comment on that, but what can we do to better serve our students in terms of, especially social media? Social media is really, it's- I've got opinions on that that I won't express, but it is an impediment. So, I want to ask policy to study this and come back to the school committee. It would be nice if we had that in time for our organization in November, so that we can have a different set of standing committees, if you will, or at least another one, which means that they would have to move out right away and be ready for at least a first reading at the end of October, and a second reading in November. Now, that's just my suggested timeline. If they can't do that, they can't do it. So, that's all I have to say from now. So, the next order of business is subcommittee reports or recommendations. Curriculum is up first.
We do have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday at 5:30 at District Office. We are first meeting, and we'll schedule more.
Any questions, whoever? Ains.
Yes, we have not met since the last school committee meeting. Our next meeting will take place on the 27th at Beckett, Washington at 5:30. Will this have to confirm? At 5:30. And I just remind the committee that, you know, we're still accepting ideas and thoughts around the budget destruction, so please submit anything. I don't believe we've received anything yet from the rest of the committee, but continue to keep following until our next school committee meeting is submitted.
And just a reminder, submitting through email is not a good way. You've got to make sure that if you do- the best thing is to come to the meeting and make the suggestions. But if you can't make the meeting and you want to make sure that you're heard, you just need to make sure that all of us are read, they're read in terms of who it is that provides that input. So, again, this is an interest of open meeting law. Okay, Policy.
We haven't met since previous to our last school committee meeting, but I know there was a second reading on that bullying policy.
So, do you want to make that, do you want to do that second meeting now?
We should, right?
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the second meeting to the bullying prevention plan, as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the second reading revision of the bullying prevention plan. This does, this will cause it to be adopted. So, I just want to make sure, is there any discussion on this?
I wanted to state that I had some questions about programs that were in place, but I spoke to Lori directly to answer all of her questions. And I feel comfortable that we're on the right track, and there's more to happen. Continue to look forward to meeting and create that meeting.
I just think that most things at this stage should be as transparent as possible. We should have an update at least every other school committee meeting. So, that would be a monthly update of where we stand in the district, what we're working on. It seems to be, you know, it's not, it's not just us in the county. It's in the states, in the country. The degree of which we recognize it may have changed. The degree of which it spreads is equal to the degree of the media spreads now. So, we all are confronted with it from a very young age all the way up to our ages. And it just, it's something that schools and school districts are going to find themselves continually on the front line of, and just sort of echo some Sean's thoughts. I mean, I just think it's paramount that we keep our heads in the game and be thinking about this stuff on a continual basis. We may, you know, we're not going to solve it. It's age-old, it's always going to be there. I think we have to probably do more to support our teachers and our educators and everybody in our school environment, and our parents, for that matter, on how to build resiliency in our children. Because I think that's going to be the real key to defeating a victim mentality, or a- and it suppresses, you know, the bullying aspects of things. So, you know, we all, we all need to learn through the changes that are happening in our environment, and I think we have a responsibility to ensure that in our school system that we stay as actively involved as possible. So, I would just request that.
If that committee's adopted, actually, then you would have a quorum for every meeting. Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any tensions? Motion carries. Okay, the school committee's self-evaluation reminder. I don't have a quorum that dates are, but this is the time of year that we evaluate ourselves. And policy, you worked on new forms. I think they're going to make some more recent changes. There were some clauses in there that really were more superintendent evaluations than school committee evaluations, and we want to take those out or reword them so they're more of the school committee related. So, I don't know where Mr. Peters is with that, or, sorry. Mr. Hagmeyer. Okay, personnel.
Personnel met Monday night and considered a number of topics. First was the list of non-represented employees. We have about 27 employees that are not represented by the union, and we have to create guidelines that we give the superintendent for their increases. We saw what had been given, the guidelines that we'd given last year and the results of that. And also, we've had changes in that, in who the people, because we've had several principles changed. We reviewed that, talked about that. Went over the evaluations of the superintendent, and once again, and superintendent gave a summary of what she had learned on her one-on-one conversations we lead to the school committee members. And we debated some topics related to that. Third one was, all of us find the evaluation tool that we use annually to evaluate the superintendent very cumbersome at best. And I could elaborate on what other issues each of us has with it, but I won't. So, there are some options, although they're very limited on what else we could do. And so, there is an example of that. So, we mentioned that. Right now, all of the members have a copy of what the Town of Newton is doing, and that may prompt some discussion. We may come back to the committee at some point to modify our evaluation tool. But it's a, it's a difficult process with a lot of constraints. We dealt with a number of other topics, but for the most part, they were in executive session, and we will be producing those in the next few meetings that the full committee will see. We have no plans for another report, only another meeting, although certainly there will be one in November, I expect. At this point, I see no reason to go into executive session. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Lacatelle? All right, we'll move on to technology. Ms. Les.
We've had tonight discussed several topics, a pretty full agenda. First, we reviewed the technology subcommittee charter. It was due, it's sufficient, no changes needed. It's on the website as well, too, if you want to read that. We discussed IT shared services with Adam Schacher. And all of it was about 900 devices up there, mostly Apple. Mr. Rice still guiding the situation up there of, you know, needs and whatever. And you mentioned that you can't go into certain details because there's a disclosure being replaced with them. So, we couldn't really, you know, discuss a lot of the technicalities, unfortunately. So, there's some concerns with that. We'll be looking into it, see if we can open that up some more.
I'll try to clarify, it's a better job. The plan was that most of the two superintendents can discuss this, or bring back the information to the committee.
We discussed preliminary technology budget, which is going to be presented at the next meeting in October. And had a few updates. TEALS is a program that we asked for volunteers from the community, you know, professionals to teach classes, like computer programming, engineering, things like that. Right now, we have no volunteers, so the TEALS program's kind of in the middle right now. The Girls for Cyber Start, which is a cybersecurity initiative and competition, I really want us to get involved with. Unfortunately, Massachusetts does not support it yet again, which is, you know, with like the Southern Brownie of the East, and yet, you know, 34 states support it. They have a competition coming up in the wintertime. January was the deadline, so hopefully they presume by the state will be made by then. Wi-Fi in buses, right now, you know, the bus company's been on it, so it's pretty much, you know, the dead topic, unfortunately. And we also discussed the AUPs. Just recently updated all three of them, the Pascal Peterson, there's no one that's either on the committee. The next meeting, I want to set a date. You said you can't do Mondays because Adam Schacher has meetings?
Yeah, their school committee meetings are on Mondays.
On Mondays, okay, so you can't do Mondays?
If we can avoid it, though.
Okay, so our best bet probably is then right before the school committee meeting. So, I'm going to set a time in October of, October 25th, 6 o'clock at Nessus. Is that a better one?
John, here goes one other topic that we discussed. I think, like Mr. Serge's, had made some mention of our infrastructure was very sound and more or less up to date or new.
Right, yeah. Almost everything in the infrastructure is pretty much new now. New servers, new Wi-Fi, a lot of new hardware. And we're looking really good right now as far as, you know, hardware acquisition. Now, it's all could be about maintenance. Did I forget anything?
Just that Power School, we're going to get an update at the next, that's up on the next Thanksgiving Power Schools. So, I think that's, that's pretty exciting. I think it's a good tool for us in the power of alls.
Yes, very good tool.
Okay, are there any questions from Ms. Les? We'll move on to the Wacona building project.
So, I can start, and then I would actually ask if Ms. De Tomaso wants to jump in at all, because she has been doing a lot of work on the school building committee. So, each of the open houses, with the exception of Wacona's, which is next week, have taken place, and there's been a presence from the school building committee at each of them, and a presence that has not been just the typical myself or Mr. Rob or Mr. Amicross speaking to the project, but Tom Callahan, Jason Dion, Ms. De Tomaso have been out at several of them. There's others as well who have been participating in them. And just getting the information out there and really sharing why we went with the option we did, but I'll let her speak to the conversation. Just some logistical things. We've submitted all of the required information. It was all due to the MSBA on the 12th, which was yesterday, was when it was due to the MSBA. And already tonight, I see an email from the MSBA with some of their initial questions and comments. So, that process is moving forward. The design team will be back on site October 11th, and I'll ask the Chair and the Vice Chair at our agenda setting meeting tomorrow if they'd like to have them at school committee, because on that date, they'll be in the district all day. They're going to be meeting with groups again, so I have a list here from the principal from DRA of all of the different subgroups of staff he wants to meet with to be getting even more specific information. So, we're getting much more into the details at this point. And then they'll be having a working group that evening, as well as a full school building committee meeting. The next big dates that we're waiting on, which will happen between now and October 11th, is there will be dates given to us from the MSBA for most likely myself, Mr. Rob, and Sean Therrien, who's been a huge contributor to this, to the work behind the educational plan, will go to Boston, to the MSBA, to answer questions they have about the document. The October 31st date is when they vote to approve it. So, they'll have us come out to speak to some of the details of it and ask some questions about the substance, and then we'll go back on the 31st of October for them to actually vote to approve it. And then we are locked in with the design plan that we've decided on. So, that's really the timeline right now. Between now and October 11th, we're waiting for a date to go down and ask, to answer questions. We've been asked some questions in writing that we're going to respond to. And then October 11th, they'll be on site again, and October 31st, we should have an approved design plan. Do you want to add anything about the meetings? Because I know you've been at several.
So, the people who were presenting at the meetings, we all made ourselves available to be at the table at the front of the open houses. Mr. Peters, Melinda Walton, Tommy Callahan, Mike Case, Bill Mahle, Holland, myself, Jason Dion, I think that's it. So, I went to Beckett and Nessus. I know there was an open house in Prangow. Didn't we already have enough people at Beckett, which is, I was originally going to be in Prangow, but I went to Beckett instead. My involvement at Beckett, we handed out flyers, we handed out the two-page PowerPoint that Lori had provided to us, which I found very helpful when talking with parents because the one-page newsletter, especially for people who are aging older, would like bigger print, more visual. And a lot of people found it very helpful because the newsletter had this schematic of the school and some verbiage, but what I did is I put it kind of like this, so the slides were below it, so I could hand it to parents, talking about the reasoning behind the new bill versus renovation. Overall, in all of the open houses that I attended, the overall reception was very positive, especially for those parents who have children, especially in Nessus. I was talking to a lot of the students who were coming into Nessus and asking when their graduation date was, and many of the children that I spoke to said, "Oh, I'm graduating in 2024." "Oh, I'm going to be in the new school," potentially. Because we did explain that it would be occupied in September 2021. A lot of the parents were very supportive of the school. They really liked the fact that the education plan was very much considered for the design of the school. There were a couple of parents at- There were a couple of parents at two of the open houses who expressed concern about air conditioning. And I assured them that that would be considered in the design. And we're very concerned about the kids being on an upper floor and having 98-degree temperatures. Some of the educators also said, now that we're talking about air conditioning, that would be a good thing. So overall, it was a very positive experience. They were very open to us being there, very thankful for us being here. At Nessus, I do have to say that Craneville and Nessus, Jason Dion had this wonderful white board with a big picture of the school. I didn't have that at Beckett, so I was a little disappointed there. But he was the star performer. And he was standing there and showing people the schematic, talking about all the technical things that I necessarily wouldn't have the answers to, like the square footage. Someone actually asked me what the square footage of the existing Wacona was. I had to run over to Jason's and see how big. I don't really know. That was about 112,000 square feet. It's actually 113,000, so I was a little bit off the goals. But overall, it was a very positive experience and I was very happy to participate.
Okay. There is another open house at Wacona, opening on the 20th of this month. So we'll have lots to attend to, but see the wonderful presentations. Will it help? Are there any questions on the Wacona Building Project? And move on to superintendents' reports and recommendations.
Sure. So I will start. I wanted to introduce you to our new administrative team here at Craneville. Many of you probably recognize both of them, perhaps because we have a couple of parents from Craneville on the committee. But certainly you should recognize Mrs. Pecor, who has been our vice principal here at Craneville for the previous two years and now has become our principal, which we're super excited about. And then Nathan Lu, who joins us from Pittsfield, and we were very fortunate to have him join our team. So do you guys want to just introduce yourselves quick? Is that okay? They're okay with this. They're very comfortable with. It is very theatrical, so she.
No, in all seriousness, I feel very honored to be able to have stepped into the role of principal. Having been the assistant principal for two years, I feel like I've gotten to know the staff and the students very well. And I feel honored. They're very dedicated, passionate about students, and we're very happy to have Nathan. I feel like our goals are very aligned of creating a safe and, you know, really compassionate learning environment for all our students. We were talking this morning about what we were going to say tonight, and we talked about our own elementary school experiences and how the both of us really remember distinct examples of teachers from when we were, you know, in first grade or second grade that really made a difference. So do you want to?
Yeah, so I was born and raised in Covington, so, you know, part of the district for a long time in my class was the last class to attend a two-room schoolhouse in Windsor. So when I was in first grade and had Mrs. Rob, Barbara Rob, we closed the school. We were the last class there. Just thinking about the passion that was instilled in me for education and learning, I can remember a situation in every grade from K to five where my eyes were opened to a different learning environment. So I'm thinking like in first grade, Mrs. Rob brought in all this like junk, like old tape players and old, you know, cassette players and just things around her house. We had to recreate them and make them our own robot. You know, things like, things like that stick with me 30 years later. Just show me how much passion she had for me and that it really was carried with my professional career as well. So I've been here three weeks. I've met a lot of people. And just have been really impressed with the staff here at Craneville, just walking to their classrooms every day and seeing just their own passion for learning and just how that carries over to the students as well, who are excited to be in the school and to learn. Part of my role in Pittsfield, I was in special education for the last eight years, working as a unit leader, so working with, in the classroom, but also coaching teachers and paraprofessionals how to become better teachers. So that's part of my role. And what I was really focused on was behavior and social emotional learning. So I know in this district and even at Craneville, we're looking to step, take the next step in phase two for PBIS. And that's something I've been really trained in and can help move Craneville along. Then Annie and I were talking this week about my goals for the year, and one of them is just looking at behavior, looking at data and how we can really look at and support our students who are the most needy with individualized plans and helping the teachers as well. So I'm excited to be here. It's great to be back in central Berkshire. You know, I graduated from Wacona and it's nice to come back and hear the plans for a new school and.
And I feel like we've been, we've been in a really good rhythm, I feel, already only three weeks in. And you've mentioned some of our plans for the year, you know, PBIS, really taking a look at social emotional learning. I think one of the things that we both believe in is the both of us getting into classrooms as much as possible, speaking to teachers face to face. We both are very big on reaching out to families, asking questions, making sure that everybody's on the same page. And I think it's the same with students, making sure that everybody is in the same conversation and that there's clear action steps to address, whether it's in behavior, whether it's an academic issue, whether it's an issue that's related to social emotional learning. Oftentimes, things collide, as we know. So if everybody's contributing to the conversation, we can work together with our families, with our teachers, with our support staff to make sure that we're making the right plans so that all of our students can grow academically, because I know that we all believe that's why we're here. Like, that's what students deserve. So we're just really excited to hit the ground running, I feel. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. It's just been a very positive start and it was a very positive process. So I had shared with Craneville teachers when the decision to have Debbie White go to Nessus was announced, that I would be holding a meeting at the end of the week to discuss next steps for Craneville. And I was flooded with positive accolades for Mrs. Pecor and what a strong leader she was and how much they were hopeful that she would be their principal. So it's been an excellent start here. We are very fortunate to have them, like Annie said, be able to hit the ground running the way they have. I don't think there's really been an impact to Craneville. They certainly wish Mrs. White well and they certainly miss her. But it's really been very smooth. There hasn't been that kind of, sometimes there's a little bit of a setback when you have to make a change in leadership. Both Annie and Debbie worked so closely together that it's been very seamless. So really positive. I'm going to do the presentation.
Can I ask that?
Oh, yeah. Quite well. Yes.
One of the things that we have, we have parents come to us every year and ask us about is how do we support our kids that are ready to excel and go above and beyond where the rest of the classes? So, you know, at some point, as you get comfortable and you're presenting more, it's good to hear both ends of the spectrum. And I'd like to have some attention on, on that end of the spectrum as well. So thank you very much.
All right. So I'm going to skip that if that's okay, just to kind of get through some of this, that's more things you have in front of you. Again, I did it, it seems like months ago at this point, but opening day, I did want to share with you, I think it was a success. The data says that it was a success, both anecdotal and from the staff who took the time to complete the survey and share their feedback around opening day. I did share with you, we had a unique guest speaker kick off opening day in the form of Mr. Bradshaw. So several years now, I've tried to gain the attention of the staff and getting staff to sit down and listen on opening day is far more challenging than any student group. So Mr. Bradshaw was able to do that much, much more successfully. It might, no, I, that I.
No, no, nothing.
No, Mr. Bradshaw, wait, let's just be honest here. You admit your weaknesses and then you seek out support to help you. So Mr. Bradshaw did an awesome job and he actually, people thought it was, it was very prepared, but it was kind of last minute and he tied it into UDL. And that, that person who was kind of that charismatic adult for him and, and really believed in him and inspired him to go into education. So quite some time later, we are fortunate that that person took that, that initiative and interest in him because he certainly benefited our district for a long time. If you are trying to wrap your head around UDL, Charlie's done a really good job of really processing it and finding ways to make it very basic and very understandable and to contrast it with the way that, that instruction used to be. So he, because he really has a broad spectrum of what education and instructional practices have looked like over time. And so a couple of examples, he's continuously giving me examples to share with the staff to just strike him. And he's like, oh, that's why UDL is so important. And it ranges. So I, I shared a couple of the examples. One is something he created for parents and I shared it in the packet. And it's a visual picture of a garden and a description about why UDL supports all students to, to follow their passions and be successful. And then the second, if you're a music fan and you watch Another Brick in the Wall on YouTube by Pink Floyd, it really explains what UDL does and, and that's very much not UDL. So it kind of, you're kind of saying, what is this UDL thing? Charlie's got a few quick ways of saying, this is what it's not and this is why we want to do UDL. So check that out. If you are interested, the keynote presentation this year, we did have Livbit, who's a known keynote and speaker at this point, talk to the staff and definitely, we, we always try to do something different, kind of to challenge our thinking and build some excitement around opening day. And this was certainly different in a different way of kind of looking at opening day and hearing from a student about what it's like to, to be sitting in the classrooms that the staff are teaching in. So the feedback was good. We, we did do a choice-based opening day, which was a first for us. So I kept kind of telling staff it was probably like a C-plus, B-minus UDL activity because in an ideal world, what I would have done is surveyed the staff and gotten their, their interest and then developed the sessions. That was just not logistically possible. That's what we're going to do in the spring. But I think we, we did pretty well with anticipating their needs based on conversational data, observational data, and then district priorities. If you look at the feedback, and this has grown, it's live, so I haven't shut it off yet, but close to 90% felt that the PD was relevant. Over 90% felt it aligned to the vision and over 90% thought that the presenters were knowledgeable. So a successful day and something we want to do more often. I did share with you, I will not get into the details of it for the, the individual student involved, but it's been more than one time that we've been concerned about kindergartners successfully navigating the bus procedures. I am proposing for next year, it's just a logistical change. I am concerned. We, we kind of say it's always a kindergartner, but as somebody who's going to have a kindergartner soon, that is a scary thing to be aware of. Anybody who watches the news on opening day or follows Twitter, when there's a bus issue and I spoke to Barbara a little bit about this, who's been in the seat of a principal, it's always a kindergartner. So anything that we can do to make sure it's not anybody, never mind a kindergartner, not anybody, it's a concern. So we, right now, when I got here, we, we started doing orientation on opening day, the day before opening day for our kindergartners, our sixth and our ninth. But our sixth and our nines go through the entire procedure. They get on the bus, they eat in the cafeteria, they go home on the bus, they access their lockers, all of that. Our kindergartners, we're not doing it that way. It's a drop-in session with their parents. So it's really missing this huge opportunity to navigate the transportation, both for the kindergartner, but also for the bus driver and the people who helped to assist them in getting to the buses, to put eyes on them and say, okay, here's my kindergartners. I visually have identified all of them. So for next year, what I'd like to do is, I've talked to the elementary principals, they're all in favor because they've all had, you know, concerns about this in their careers, that we switch it so that kindergartners access the same way that sixth and ninth do. Because of the parent component at that age level, we'll still do a drop-in session in late August, but we will have a full day orientation. I think it'll make a difference. It's just one more thing that we can do to be hyper vigilant around this because it's, it's scary and it's a, it's, you think, but the other piece of it is, I don't know if you've ever watched five-year-olds getting two vehicles, but they're usually, sometimes they're actually picked up, they're usually assisted, they're usually strapped into a booster seat, and then all of a sudden, you're actually getting onto a big yellow bus and finding your seat. Drastic difference in what they've experienced to date at home. So we want to take that step. So I'll, I'll remind you of that, but I do want to change the way we, we run that, that orientation.
Do we still give them a ride during orientation in the spring? When my kids were small, they came in during the spring, they met the teachers and they took a ride. It gives them that.
Yeah. Have we done that?
I know last year they did.
At Craneville?
Yes.
And they just, they just went for a ride just so they can say, hey, I rode a bus and I'm a big kid now, you know, it's a big deal to do.
Yeah. So I think this, we, so we are doing that. Are we doing that at Beckett though as well? Yes, Beckett, Kittredham, Craneville. But I don't know that the carryover is there come August. So Ellen probably can speak to it better than I can.
It's a fun bus ride. You come in with your kid for the spring orientation and they go, these kids are not necessarily in their class. They meet all three kindergarten teachers, but it's not necessarily their teacher. They kind of get on a bus, go for a quick ride, and then they come back and they're like, yay, I rode on a bus! And it's, it's not the real deal, so.
So we'll stick with that.
They just think they did something for a kid.
There was issues with funding.
So we won't stop doing that because that yay, I rode on a bus is getting them excited about kindergarten. But it's not necessarily getting them to know, here's my bus driver and this is going to be busy and I need to look and I need to pay attention and, so we'll do both.
Yes.
It's agreeable as a kindergarten parent. I'm like, so we'll do both. Makes sense. Opening day numbers. So we're 27 students less than last year, I believe if I did the math correct. Makes sense? Differences, again, I remember Rob doing this and, and just emphasizing this is a moving target. October 1 is our real reporting for the state. This numbers, these numbers will change, not that they could, they will change. And Greg always kind of hesitates when I ask him for them because they will change. But that was opening day. Interestingly, the absence is the exact same, so. And then the school choice numbers, we do have several new school choice students. It kind of reflects for you where our school choice numbers are sitting. As of right now, we will have changes in accurate numbers for you sometime around December. The biggest influx was obviously at Wacona with 37 new, new students. No, that's, no, I'm like, that does not make any sense. I would not, Rick would have been having a Chromebook catastrophe. 37 overall, 13, the biggest increase is at Wacona with 13, 37 new students. Nicole went over the bullying procedures, but I did just highlight, just so you're aware, the, the main updates that were included in that. The inclusive practices, I think you can, you probably already have read through it. I don't want to go through it in too much detail, but I do want to mention a couple of things. The parent university, so one thing we've been talking about doing, I don't know if people have heard of these, Boston Public does a huge one, which is, is quite extensive. But a lot of districts are doing them, basically an opportunity for parents to learn about things happening in the schools. But to be universally designed, what we did is we asked parents, well, when would you want this to happen? You know, first we asked, are you interested? And the vast majority of parents, like well over 90%, were like, yes, I want to go to this. Would you like childcare to access it? Well over 50%, yes, childcare would be beneficial. When logistically do you want to do this? Vast majority of people were weekday evenings. And then we asked them to weigh in on what topics. Really popular topics were supporting Chromebooks at home, technology use in the, in the home, safety and security. So we're actually going to ask Chief Coe and Trooper Kanata to do a session. But what we've done is we have given that data to the UDL steering committee, which Leslie chairs. So under inclusive practices, which is our, our district priority, is UDL is the prong that is how you actually provide instruction. It's also about parent engagement and parent support. There's a steering committee that Leslie facilitates. They're going to look at that data and start to design the parent university. So I just wanted to share that with you in case you're interested or as parents or committee members. If you, one more way to really understand what UDL looks like as an instructional method, the Wacona, actually more than just Wacona, Wacona is the one that I have an example from. But several different schools and content areas universally designed different summer activities. I have an example I'm sharing from Wacona. They universally designed their summer reading program and Megan Donovan, who is a teacher, an English teacher at Wacona, created a really, a universally designed PowerPoint to explain to the students what the projects were, the intent behind them, how they were going to go over them. And you can look at that and get some, some good understanding. Basically, when we talk about UDL, we say it's a firm goal that's met through flexible means. So the firm goal, students engage with literature. The flexible ways they can do that, they could choose their book and they could choose the way they demonstrated their knowledge. Some of the things that were really popular from the gallery walk I went to, blogs, iMovies. And then some of the basic ones, like that were, were kind of more prevalent in the 90s. Kids want to be creative and actually, you know, paintings, that kind of thing. So take a look at that. The second prong under, under inclusive practices is PBIS. And I outlined where each school is at with that and what we would be doing to continue to move them forward. The last one that I, I wanted to just highlight is, is hopefully going to be funded pretty extensively by a grant that Annie actually and I have applied for. So the third prong under inclusive practices is social emotional learning. There hasn't been a lot of tangible resources from the state at this point on that to really focus and guide that work in a systematic, evidence-based way. There was a grant, a competitive grant that was posted in the past month that Annie and I are applying for. And the grant is two phases. First year of the grant is to basically assess all of your practices that fall under social emotional learning. Annie and I were actually surprised at how comprehensive it is. Talks about everything from your nutrition practices, to how you file 51As as a mandated reporter around abuse and neglect, to your bullying prevention and intervention plan, anything you could really think about, about a student's overall well-being, your basic needs to be successful in a classroom need to be met first. If we get the grant, which we think that we are a very strong candidate to do so, a steering committee will be formed. Now, you might say, well, what if you don't get the grant? We do have a backup plan. We'll have to be a little more creative, because we won't have access to one of the main components, but we can still do the work. If we get the grant, the state has a tool that we would administer to survey every single building, to get information about the social-emotional learning climate in every single building. And then it would all be tabulated for us, and we would work with a consultant to really dissect it and create an implementation plan in year two. So year one, you're really collecting the data, you're starting to make plans, you're working with the steering committee, and in year two, you use the funds to actually implement what you've recommended. There's several different groups that need to be represented on the steering committee. What I like about it is you see a lot of the same faces all the time, because we, you know, we kind of go to the same people all the time, because there's a lot of work to be done, you've got a lot of people doing a lot of the work, a lot of the same people doing the work. This really taps into different groups. So we'd like to have a representative from the Gay-Straight Alliance. We'd like to have a representative from the Best Buddies Program. We'd like to have a representative from the nurses. So it kind of gets into different groups, and I have asked for a school committee member, and Barbara has agreed to participate. So excited about that. And what Pete had asked for before is a monthly update. That would be very feasible, because this committee would be meeting regularly and actually having some really solid evidence to be sharing on a regular basis. So hopefully, on the 11th, I'll know if we got the grant or not. And then if we do, I will be telling you exactly how we'll be rolling out our year. And if we don't, I'll be telling you what our plans are to still do the core pieces of the work. Does that make sense? So it was, Annie and I were kind of talking about, how can we do this? And we're like, how do you really focus yourself in social-emotional learning and collect evidence? And sure enough, like, same timing, I got an email about the grant. So, good news. My goals are in the packet. They're for you to review, and I would anticipate a lot of you haven't had a lot of time to, because we just finished on Monday night at Personnel. So I certainly will give you that time to digest them, because they're not being approved till next week, next week, till the next meeting. If anyone has questions or input, though, please reach out to me. Does that work? You can give me a call if you kind of are reading them. A couple people already have, and I've tried to answer their questions. They are focused, again, inclusive practices. I tried to make it more robust, though, so it's really focusing on those other two areas of PBIS and SEL as much as UDL. Because we're very far along in UDL, not so much in PBIS, and in the beginning stages in SEL. And then student achievement, I still kind of look at data that's pretty, still coming out and is embargoed, but I tried to use that. The MSBA project, that's a huge part of our world. And then take a close look at the fourth goal, because I did try to use your feedback directly in that goal, if you will. So, that's it. The only other thing, really quick, is if you are saying, what is PBIS? I hear about it, I hear people talk about it, but what is it? We are going to do a presentation on that at the October meeting, when the school improvement plans are presented, because you'll hear it in the school improvement plans. The elementary, middle, and high school principals have really tried to focus their school improvement plans in three areas: UDL, PBIS, and SEL. That's really what we're doing. And everything falls under one of those, really does. You couldn't think of anything that didn't, even fire girls. All right? We even got fire girls. So I'll go through this, and I don't want to put anyone on the spot, and it's certainly, I'm the author, and, Rick, is your email here?
Yeah.
Can I just pull up the one I just said? Because I want to make sure you have the most recent one.
I think that's it.
I think it is?
Yeah.
If it isn't, you have it right in front of you as well. It would be a matter of like a title that Joe or Rick... So I just want to go over this. This was a topic we put on the agenda for tonight. Want me to forecast it out a little bit? And I think it's timely, because I've gotten several questions from committee members, like, how's it going? Some of you, like Mr. Gazillo, have experienced it directly, because you have a student at the high school who's received a Chromebook. But really, how's it going? Because we have invested a lot in technology. As Joe Sturgis said tonight, in the Technology Subcommittee, this high-in-the-sky wishlist doesn't really exist anymore, because the vast majority of it's here, it's been met. We've got a lot in classrooms, which is awesome. But how's it going? So just to make sure everyone does remember, we do, our staffing structure has changed. As Mr. Les said, we are going to get an update on how this relationship with Adams-Cheshire is going, and we will certainly speak to the specifics once I have the opportunity to sit down with John Bosberg, who's the superintendent at Adams-Cheshire, per the agreement that happens in October. So again, our Director of Technology, this just kind of shows you, if you kind of want to know what the breakdown is, they're a very organized department, how they divide out the work. We have hired a full-time technician. She started mid-August, mid-August, has been very successful, been able to kind of jump right in and join the team, which has been great. Just kind of, I did mention that while the hardware, the software, and really more of the infrastructure is under these individuals, they are very knowledgeable when it comes to the Google platform and are able to work in that world as well, which is a benefit to us. It's not the norm everywhere, but it's absolutely a benefit here. But digital integration is supported in the district. How it's used extensively by our Director of Teaching and Learning. We're very fortunate. Our instructional coach, Tad Roby, was probably using technology as much, if not more than anybody, in a classroom setting, so was really bringing that with her as she coaches. Our principals are very skilled in this. We actually have a consulting relationship from the Collaborative for Educational Services of North Hampton. That relationship has existed for a while. It was specific to Beckett-Washington at one time, and then it was more broad. This year, we're targeting most of their resources at Wacona in order to get more teachers with expertise who can provide leadership in real time in the building. So there's a group of seven teachers working with the consultants from CES at Wacona. Again, really, all we can say about this is some of the very early stages. Mr. White's report is going well, but we really have not had that dialogue with Adams-Cheshire at this time, and just kind of give you an overview of what his responsibilities are there. Again, when we were doing this, I said to Rick and Joe, Joe Sturgis being our Assistant Technology Director, what, right now, is kind of a hard thing to ask them, because they're so still unpacking things for this year. But what are you thinking is going to likely be in the budget in some capacity come January? This was a suggestion brought forward by Mr. Sturgis. I think it's an excellent one, is really to have a paid summer support position. That's something we do in custodial staff. We often have to do a lot of painting in the summer. There's more work than there traditionally would be. So we bring people in for the short term. When you bring in a lot of the technology that has to be repaired, inventoried, that could be supported in the summer, would be something I certainly would consider bringing forward. I think it would be an asset to the department. Our plan for the devices, we have 150 graduating seniors. They're going to be giving their devices back. They're only going to be a year old. These are new Chromebooks. They're coming back to the district. They're going to be given to our rising fifth graders as they enter the sixth grade. As you can see, 150 minus 105. In an ideal world, you'd end with 45 of them. We'd like to think 45 will live a successful life, but there's a likelihood it could be less than that, but we will have a balance of Chromebooks. Those Chromebooks will be cycled into replacements, because as I believe Mr. Les said, our focus right now is making sure we keep the devices quality. We're replacing things, we're planning for when they have, their lifespan has been reached. That was just some data from Mr. Sturgis, that Google's update policy is four years for a Chromebook. We know that that could be less, but that's kind of the expectation. Again, just replacing things at this point. The only thing that would be in addition is we would like to consider adding cases for the grade six through eight Chromebooks. They don't leave the building, but they do travel the hallways. So that would certainly be a benefit. Again, the Chromebook rollout, I think some of you already are familiar with this, but just to kind of, to give you a reminder, pre-K through 2, they have access to carts. There's iPad carts, there's Chromebook carts, and there are computer labs. There's a high level of access, so there's certainly plenty for the staff to use for those grade levels. 3 through 5, every student has a Chromebook, but the Chromebook doesn't leave the classroom. 6 through 8, every student has a Chromebook, and it doesn't leave the building. And then 9 through 12, every student has a Chromebook issued to them for the year. All students, and Aaron actually thought, Mr. Rob actually thought it could be literally all, have been given their Chromebooks. They were down to single digits as of this afternoon of Chromebooks that had to be given out. Of the students who were given the option of bringing their own device, only 12 chose to do so. They gave that option to 11th and 12th graders, knowing they have to start making those kinds of decisions, getting ready for college, what kind of a device do you want to use? And if they had a laptop, they wanted to bring, they could. The devices in 10 through 12 are new. The ninth graders brought their devices with them from the middle school. If you want more information, there's a ton on the website. Rick, Joe, Aaron have all been adding a lot. You Messina, we were able to borrow some of what Raylock has, because they're a few years ahead of us in this initiative. The integration, I think, is what people are most interested in. I was talking with a couple staff members who are not at the elementary level, but have spent some time there. K-5 has extensive use. We classrooms did really, really creative ways with the Chromebooks. Really, really quite impressive to see what I'm often taking back that the students at that age level can do, and the creative use. The use of 6A has increased substantially. You have to remember as well, for a long time, K-5 had the most access to technology. So they're using it extensively, they've had a lot of access, they've had a lot of training. We have a couple Google-certified teachers at that level, so a lot of use. 6 through 8, lots and lots of use. Where we're trying to support and give PD is to move beyond the commonly-used Google apps to give some different kinds of options, but lots of use in the classrooms at this point. 9 through 12, by and large, beginning stages. Again, you say that, and then you might walk by a classroom and say, there's extensive use. But our baseline of where teachers are self-reporting is that they're saying, we kind of go, we're in the beginning stages, we have some with more expertise, we're all using it for Google Docs, for Google Slides, those kinds of things. But the more extensive way of changing instruction with it, we're hoping that will come from this embedded coaching. So that's what I was talking about earlier. At Wacona, we have a contract for embedded coaching for the Collaborative for Educational Services, and they're actually giving extensive training to seven teachers throughout the year. And then part of the commitment from the teachers is they'll in turn be resources for their colleagues, and Mr. Rob has a pretty extensive schedule for that. 3 through 10, we do state assessments on the technology as well at St. Island. So this is just some data. The Google platform, again, extensively used. And I hope that this is, no, this, you, you showed me the last-minute edit before it went to you. I don't know, Joe, how to type out. So Google Classroom, again, get 187 active classes as of today. Last year, 140. A lot of those are at the middle school, extensive use in Google Classroom. We have 1,100 active users. Last year, we had 1,000. So lots of use. Websites, now, these numbers are likely higher, as Joe always cautions me, because these are linked to our website. We keep finding kind of websites out there, not to call them rogue websites, but websites that have not yet been linked to ours, and teachers are maintaining. We're trying to have them all linked to ours. So as you see, extensive use of websites. And then again, the PD going on. I did mention that the Top Girls Who Code program we're going to roll out this year. It's a national program, and I, of course, left the date of it. It's pretty striking, so I just really want to quickly mention it. We'll have a Girls Who Code program at 3 through 5, 6 through 8, 9 through 12, all funded through grants and corporate sponsors. Has some really strong data around showing that alumni of the Girls Who Code programs are choosing majors in computer science at 15 times the national average. And that's obviously quite impressive, especially given that from 1995, 37% of computer scientists were women, and it's now at 24%, predicted to be at 20% within the near future. So it's on a downward slide, and the jobs are on an upward trajectory. So getting more girls excited and interested. The other interesting data is the loss happens. 66% of girls aged 6 through 12 say, I'd be interested in that, I might want to do a job with that. By the time they're college freshmen, only 4%. So really neat program. They provide all of the curriculum, they provide all of the actual instruction. You provide the space, the devices, and a facilitator. And it also has some kind of, you know, team building, relationship building, kind of empowerment components to it as well. So we're excited about that. And we're actually, logistically, and I'll share an update, thinking we're going to be able to do it as a 8, 3 through 5 program that will share all elementars. So again, check this out if you can. It has all the links, but it's just different ways technologies in the schools. Every school has a green screen. They're used in some awesome ways, like really creative, cool stuff going on with the green screen. Every school has a, so the elementary shares a 3D printer, but the secondary have a combination of six 3D printers as well as a fab maker. But that's just kind of a list of all the different things that are going on. Lots of use for parent communication. I bet people in this room are using it for Blooms, ClassDojo, Remind are big ones. But if you want to check out the links, you can just literally hear how these different things work. But if you do nothing else, Mary Kay McLesby shared this. PTO this year at Beckett-Washington, this is such an awesome thing, decided to fund the school supplies. So there was no, like, last-minute run to target for parents, or anxiety on the part of a child of, do I have the right stuff? They funded all school supplies. Teachers love it, because they can say, take out your red notebook, and they know you have a red notebook, versus a Justin Bieber notebook, or whatever the cool notebook is. Right, I don't know, that's pain in my cells, because you're way cooler than Justin Bieber. But they actually know.
They have a red one, okay.
They know what they have. So the kids in fifth grade said they wanted to make a video thanking them. And check it out, because you'll see, it's not a first-time thing. They know what they're doing. They almost are like, I love the way these red, you know, they like are talking very naturally, as if they're almost doing like an advertisement. And it's because they do that kind of stuff all the time. So check that out. But we're really very, very, very fortunate with what we have for technology in classrooms. We are trying to keep up with the demand for professional development to, because teachers are excited about this, they want to use it to enhance skillset knowledge, and support that the best that we can. So that's kind of where we're at. Those were the most, I don't know if Mr. Hope is in the room, but opening day, if he was, like, crammed in there. The Google sessions.
Oh, they're great, they're great.
And they were packed, right? That was actually, we had one more question, I don't want to. Logistically, did you like the rooms for the PD sessions? A lot of people said we needed more room for the Google. People were spilling out the doors.
Yeah, the Google Sessions were in the Omak Room.
Yes.
And, yeah, we need to plug in, too. Everybody needs to plug in. Very informative. Let's see, Ms. Judd Ware at White House was our main presenter. She was phenomenal, and she walked a lot of us through. My generation, anyway, were digital natives, so we were kind of like, what do we do here? How do we make it easier, more conducive to use in our classroom? They were both very informative. A lot of applicable things that we wish we had known last year and the year before had hit the ground running this year with. I was, I got a lot out of it, I know we all did, and we could have had a room twice its size.
Yeah, it was huge. And what Mr. Hope just said is a concern that we've got to be careful with. Like with Messicas, they got way more technology than they got professional development. It was kind of not a balance, whereas Wacona's getting a balance, so it's a little bit more, you know, it's still, the technology's sitting there. So you can only keep up so much. We're always trying to be really purposeful around that, because if you have the devices, you need the support to use them.
That's true.
And we're trying to do better by that, if you will. I have one more to say, but does any of you have any questions about that?
Couple of highlights. The Girls for Service are, although very low with the Girls Who Code, you know, the program, so I'll, I'll stand on top of that and see if you'll ever message you, just comes on board.
Yeah.
And present that to you. And a thought came to my head just now when we made this presentation of the downside of all this. I've been pushing this for years, supporting this for years. We're finally there. We got one-on-one, you know, of equipment for all the kids. I've been reading articles though in past years about teachers who use the equipment as a way of, you know, dumping off the work onto the kids while the teachers, you know, don't do as much in class as they should. Now we need to watch that. Now, we, we have the technology still in the school district. We need to make sure that this technology's worked, used right. It's just a tool, it's not a end-all solution. So if you can keep an eye on that as well.
Laurie, I just wanted to say that that presentation was exciting. I'm so glad to see you enthusiastic and see you being rolled out the way it is. Because I think we're right on. I really do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ellen?
So, the presentation was great. I'm so glad that all this technology being used in the classrooms, our learning and growing with technology. Victoria is very excited with her Chromebook in class. But an idea for parents university, which we were talking about, is with these kids getting all this access to all the technology, their own school email address, all these websites that they're being pointed to to help them, you know, grow their skills, is to remind the parents of like the social media more of the bad parts about social media. And I know that we have all these websites out there that we think that we can protect them from, but then there are like six more that come on where, you know, kids can go on without parents' knowledge and hide their accounts. And I think it might be a good idea to have somebody who maybe know the ins and outs of social media, how to protect your kids, how to, these are all of the newest apps, the latest social media sites. These are what kids are doing on them. And these are the, you know, what parents can do to keep access to them so they know what they're, they can keep track of their kids, help them, you know, navigate responsibility of social media, protect against cyberbullying. Well, that feels...
The VA's office has supported this on that and up the ass and they got an really excellent, at least they had, Laurie, an excellent presentation on that, all the ins and outs. I'm not sure if you could engage a second, a, a user or... He was the one that made the presentation, so he does an excellent job.
I thought it was like we had recorded that. Do we have that, Rick? Can we make it available on the website so any, any parent could watch it at any time?
Well, it's, it was part of a school committee meeting. Well, there was one that was part of a school committee meeting. That's already up on the website. And there was a second one, I believe, in NESCIS. I'll look for that one. I'm not sure where that went.
He, he did do an excellent job.
Can I say two things? That's, that's an excellent idea. Agreed completely with you. One thing to keep in mind as a school committee, when we set these home with kids, we also put a content filter on it. So there is a content filter. It is a base level of protection and we certainly shouldn't absolutely go beyond that, especially for, for, uh, social media. But it is there, just so you know, okay?
I see kids now more and more asking for phones and their own devices and it's...
Oh, yeah.
You know, parents give the devices out and they have no idea what their kids are really doing on them.
That's true.
So just, just a remark, it was a year or two ago that you did that, probably two years ago? It'd be good to check in with them to see if there's been an update to that presentation if we want to have attorney, consor, committee guys at some point in time. You enjoyed coming in and presenting to the committee, I think.
Things, things change very quickly.
They do. Yeah, that's why I'm talking.
Technically part of, you know, that digital native, but I still, I just, I don't do Instagram. I don't do Snapchat, Facebook either. I have no clue of all the other social media sites out there, the powers of it. I could...
We had nothing good to say about Snapchat.
So the next thing I have that falls under my report is the recommendation regarding of the Director of Student Services. So I did share with you, our Director of Student Services has resigned effective October 1. She has accepted actually a superintendency in Connecticut. So we are certainly supportive of her, but obviously our, our next thought is, what is our plan? We are very, very fortunate that Stephanie Case, who is the retired director from Pittsfield, a phenomenal director who also knows us well because she's done an interim for us before and has just allowed things to, to work like clockwork when, when we've had disruption in, in permanent directors. So my recommendation at this time to appoint Stephanie as the Director of Student Services as the interim. She has shared with me, she will stay with us through December through the break and then she will be off to Hawaii. So she has said, that's kind of her timeline. I do believe I will be able to bring a recommendation to you about a permanent, a permanent director between now and then, but I am very, very confident in, in Mrs. Case. We are lucky that she has done this in the past. We're also lucky that while we have had two directors resign for some unique reasons, they've done really good work. So it's, it's not a matter of a situation that's in crisis, but you do need someone in that seat at all times. So I would recommend that and they will do a little bit of transition in the next couple of weeks, but Stephanie is very familiar with us.
Do I remember, please make a motion.
Whereas Maria Garrick will resign as Student Services Director effective September 30th, 2018, be a result of the CBRSD School Committee appointing Ms. Stephanie Case the interim Student Services Director in accordance with MGL Chapter 71B, Section 3A B, effective October 1st, 2018, and shall continue in that assignment until the new Student Services Director is appointed by the CBRSD School Committee and begins service.
Can we have a motion in a second for appointment of interim Student Services Director? Is there any discussion? If you see none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. And that's it for regular business this evening. The superintendent has noted one personnel change and I'm not sure if there's any whole business and is there any business that I would like to see on the agenda? Is there any emergency business for tonight or something that we tend to have a nice time? Okay, then we'll close with the remarks of the committee. Ms. Ralph?
Yeah, I just, I wondered, just had a couple of conversations about how hot it's been and, and has been the first two weeks of school, very, very hot. How did we ever make out with the filters for the faucets here in Craneville? Were we going to look into the faucets getting filtered possibly to make the drinking water a little better?
In the, the filters in the classroom? Let me follow up with Jason Meon on that. Okay? And I'll get, I'll send something out to you.
That specifically in this building, Ms. Ralph? That specifically in this building?
Yeah, because the conversation was about the other schools getting the water fountain things so they fill up their water bottles and we weren't getting here at Craneville, but it was suggested by a committee member that maybe because we all have faucets, they put them underneath and we have a plumber on duty, so...
Well, I can clear, can I add to that? I can clarify that. I think I, I had said that the, the additions we made in the other schools were filtered water. They are not. So this is not a lone school without filtered water. So I just wanted to make that clear.
They have the ability to get their, their water bottles filled and stuff.
From a machine that is adapted to their, their water, bubbler or faucet. Here, the classrooms each have one.
So this is a good example of what that committee might study in part of the school. Anyone else? Yeah, I've got, I've got just two things. Did everyone get a copy of this in school? The reason I'm asking, if you didn't, what, what, Greg, no?
I think members have registered to go. Did I forget anything? I believe I, because I registered you before you changed your mind. I do have cop, I, I have one copy, I can make copies of.
Mine just came today.
Yeah, mine did too. So my statement, yeah. The intent is, there's, there's nine resolutions in here and we wrote on those. So when our members go attend this conference in November, they can vote. Reflecting what the school committee recommends. We're not going to make it as clunky as I made it last time. We're not going to put the whole motion in there. We just got the title and we can discuss it in the meeting and keep on with it. It's just, we've got an hour to get through it. It's the last meeting. And the only other thing I wanted to state is relative to that subcommittee that recommended that policy look into, I've heard nothing but good things about the majority of the students in this district and how respectful they are and they held us. We're not going to hold 100% of these people and people. So I just wanted to state that. I've heard things from teachers who have subbed in this district that came in from other schools that they, especially, well, all of them.
There's a visitor.
It's, it's...
Cue, I get to leave because he flung a bug at me. Outside the rules.
It's not that I can't.
Struggle line. We feel any, sorry.
Well, that committee can look into the parking.
I'm done.
It's my cue.
We've got a big one over here.
Motion to adjourn. Get out of here before that buzz over runs. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this being stands.